I'd like to call our meeting to order and I'd like to welcome you tonight. We do have a great collection of veterans, glad to see you here, and some members of our committees and members of our community. At this time, we have with us Dr. Ron Gonbult, who is going to lead us in our invocation. He's from the Word of Truth Ministry, and that will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day, you're blessed as you see. We thank you for allowing us to come together. We pray now that you would bless this meeting. God, give these leaders the headship of Christ. Give them the understanding as you gave solemn wisdom that he could lead his people. We thank you for the wisdom you've given these leaders, and we ask your blessings upon us all. We ask a special blessing upon the country of Ukraine, and as they deal with such devastation, Lord, that you would cover them, not only them, but our country as we deal with this pandemic, Lord, strengthen us through this situation. And we give you praise for all that you're doing. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add item D to the agenda, the consideration of applications for Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation Committee.
Okay, we're adding, under new business, we'll be adding item D, and that's the recommendations of our nomination committee. Any other additions or deletions? If not, do I have a motion to approve our agenda that's before you?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. And this is an item on our agenda. Lots of times, for whatever reason, I have skipped it and gone and had to go back and get it. So official comments, it used to be at the end, but they're at the beginning. And so what I want to do first is to recognize the fact that we do have a lot of concerned veterans here this evening, and know that, you know, you have my heart. My family is very tied to military, Navy, Marine, Army, paratrooper, 82nd, my dad. Served tours in Afghanistan, Iraq, and of course, my dad, four tours of duty in Vietnam. So when you talk about the concern for the Veterans Memorial, know that it's concerned me also. So what I've decided, and I talked to members of our board, and one of the solutions we came up with was a recommendation that we have to address the concern now. It's where it is, and we know we've got to address it. We know that with coordination, that we can remove the states with marking, put them back down, because a surveyor actually put them there. So Memorial Day will be intact. We don't have to worry about Memorial Day. And as far as moving forward, we don't know the accurate timeline, because they're still buying up property along Rockfish Road. So what I would like to do is recommend to our board that we furnish our community and our Veterans Committee an ad hoc committee, and that committee would be appointed by the mayor, and that committee would serve until such time as we come up with good recommendations for how we have a solution for our memorial park, as to what it's going to look like, what we need to do, what we need to do as far as making it so that it's a place we'll all be proud of. My thoughts are that I would appoint to Dr. Oatman, because he represents as chairman of our Veterans Council. I'd ask Mr. Morris, Jim Morris, because he actually was our former president. I'd ask Commissioner Skarola, because she in fact has our liaison there, and she is a veteran. I would want someone from our Parks and Rec Committee, someone from our Appearance Committee, and I believe someone would be appropriate from the Sunshine Committee, because all of these have people that have been involved, one way or the other, with veterans, but also they have an impact on what happens in our park, because appearance is important, because they take a look at how things are going to look, and Parks and Rec, and that this is the Parks and Rec facility, either, any location you put it in, it would be under their jurisdiction. And then I would ask our town manager if he would make a point of making sure that those other members, rather than my point, those members without a preference by them, I've talked to the ones that I've just listed. But what we would do is have a first committee meeting, immediately charge them with getting something to us, because we can't be, we've got to try to be proactive in this situation. And I think proactive would mean come up with the ideas for our veterans, so they have input. And there's nothing has been developed, there's no place for the cannon to go. Anything that has been thought has been thrown out there as suggestions. So just know there's no decisions made until a recommendation comes from our Veterans Council and this new committee. And we're going to call it Veterans Memorial Relocation Committee, relocation or renovation, whatever's required, whatever we need to do. I hope that is a solution that will, everybody will be pleased with, and know that we'll all work hard to make this happen. And someone asked me about funding, and the thought on funding is, that's not under concern of this committee. This committee just needs rec, we're recommending to us. And what we'll be doing is during public comments, we'll let those that have signed up to speak, because this is not an opportunity for spokespeople right now. So now I'll turn it over to Commissioner Marley for public official comments.
I'm, I don't have anything right now, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Skarola.
Well, thank everyone for coming here. I haven't seen the room this filled since I've been the commissioner. Thanks for everyone for being here. That's all, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner, Mayor Protim McCray?
I echo what Commissioner Skarola said. It's good to see a full room. Please come back to see us. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell?
Same. Thank everyone for coming out this evening, and as the mayor said, the veteran is definitely a priority for us to address and work on, and trust me, we will be working on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Legg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's hard when you get this item at the beginning of the agenda. Took my notepad away from me. I can't, I don't have to write notes anymore. I also would like to thank everyone for attending here this evening. I appreciate all the citizens that we have here, and especially those veterans that we have in attendance tonight. Thank you very much for your service, and thank you for being here tonight. I would like to thank all who attended the opening day ceremonies for the youth baseball, softball season. It was a great turnout over there, and I heard a lot of nice things, because our board was there, and people were appreciative of that. They appreciated it very much. So don't you guys ever think that people don't notice us as individuals and leaders? So, anyway, I am not talking myself, I better shut up.
For a quick update, my brother is coming along okay in Kentucky.
He's been diagnosed with stage four cancer, and he's been through some surgeries, and the good Lord's got his hand on him. So all if you would, if you would please, add him to your prayer list at your home, at your church, at wherever it may be. I would request that you do that, and I know that he would appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll start presentations. The first one we have is the final presentation, Strategic Plan by Rick Rossetti. Now I'll turn the microphone over to you, sir.
He does now, right Drew? First of all, that's right. So Commissioner Mitchell says that I have five minutes, so I'll make this short, sweet, and to the point, because evidently there's other things going on. And it would be short, sweet, and to the point anyway, Commissioner, but even more so now. So I'd like to thank you all, mayor and council, commissioners, for the opportunity to present tonight, as well as the opportunity to work together. So thank you for all of the work that you have helped do as it relates to putting this strategy document together. I'd also like to acknowledge two other people. One is Scott, the city manager, has been very helpful throughout this process in helping me, you know, navigate certain things and giving me certain advice that has been very helpful. And I'd particularly like to acknowledge Drew Holland, who was really the initiator of this in terms of initial contact, and has been really instrumental and key in making sure that this has happened. So, thank you, Scott, thank you very much. We had the presentation, you know, at Rockfish Camp a few weeks ago, so I won't bore you with all of that. What I'd like to do at a high level is share what I think we've done and where you are in this process. And I would like to highlight one page. So, one of the things that you all have done is, when you all engaged me, you really engaged me to help you think differently about Hope Mills. And through this process, where you've, you know, talked to each other, talked to, talked to the department head, city manager, and through that engagement process, you know, you've come up with several accomplishments. One of them is a revitalized mission statement. So now people can be clearer about why it is that Hope Mills exists as a town and what its services are. You've come up with a draft mission sta, a vision statement, which kind of talks about the kind of place you want Hope Mills to continue to be and to grow into. I'll say more about that in a minute. The third thing you've done is you've created and basically codified organizational values that you live by and that you want folks in the organization to live by. The other thing that you've done is you've put together some goals that we've put under some buckets or key focus areas. All of those things have given you the foundation to do what you say you want to do, which is to move from reactive to proactive. All right? And so while at this moment you don't have a strategic plan in the, in the purest sense of that, you have the foundation of that, so that, for example, next year, you'll begin to walk more into that and be more formal with the things that you're thinking about. You're in that, in the middle of the process of moving from reactive and ad hoc to more connected and proactive. On page eight, one of the things that, that I presented to you is, if you remember, some of the key focus areas we put together, Drew and I and Scott kind of looked at those key focus areas and kind of tightened them up just a little bit. And what I did was I put some draft goals and some draft action items that I would want you to think about, maybe not for this year, but maybe going forward, that will give you an idea of how to operationalize the thoughts you're having about strategy. Because what you've done is you anchored this in the vision that you have for the town, and now with the key focus areas, it tells you where you're spending your time. So I think you're off to a really good start in terms of what you've done and what you've put together, and I'm very grateful to be a part of that. And just one other comment, the, you know, just to say a word about the department has been involved in this process and providing input. So I think, you know, you have input from, from key folks in the organization that helped form this as well. So really, my time is just about up. And I wonder if, you know, he told me he had 2,500 questions. I told him I didn't have that kind of time, but I do have some time if you have a few questions.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Rossetti?
To really end the game, go in too many questions.
That's probably true, Jerry. If you have questions, you can reach out to me. You have my email, and if, you know, if we need to set up something more formal, we can certainly do that. And as a representation of the League of Municipalities, I just want to thank you for this opportunity, and the League thanks you as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay. All right, next we have a proclamation, and this proclamation is for an event that's going to take place this week. This is a national event, and I'll read this at this time. Whereas the National Day of Prayer was created in 1952 by a joint resolution of Congress and signed into law by President Harry S. Truman, in 1988, the law was unanimously amended designating the first Thursday of May as a national day of prayer. Whereas the National Day of Prayer has great significance for us as a nation and enables us to recall the way in which our founding fathers sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions. Whereas the National Day of Prayer has become a national annual observance which belongs to all Americans as a day that transcends different cultures and brings together all citizens from all backgrounds. Whereas our hope is that individuals, churches, and spiritual leaders in America will humble ourselves and unify in prevailing prayer for the great move of God in America. Whereas the theme for 2022 National Day of Prayer is Exalt the Lord Who Has Established Us, based on Colossians 2:6 and 7. Therefore, as you have received Christ Jesus the Lord, so walk in him, having been firmly rooted and now being built up in him and established in your faith, just as you were instructed, and overflowing with gratitude. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jackie Warner, hereby proclaim May 5th, 2022, as the National Day of Prayer in the Town of Hope Mills, and urge all citizens to observe this day by joining members of all faiths and creeds and seeking divine guidance for ourselves, our leaders, and our country. And this town service will be at noon, and it'll be at the gazebo, which is right outside in the courtyard area. Normally, we do it right in front of town hall, but because of the construction, we'll be at the gazebo. So welcome everyone to come, and know that it, it is done completely by our pastors' coalition, and that is made up of pastors of all the churches that would want to attend or be a part of in Hope Mills. Next, we have proclamation, today's proclamation day, too. Air Quality Awareness Week, May 2nd through May 6th. Whereas the National Weather Service, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the U.S. Forest Service, the U.S. Department of State, and the EPA has announced Air Quality Awareness Week 2022 will be held May 3rd through, May 2nd through May 7th. Whereas the theme for this year is Be Air Aware and Prepared. Whereas continued action to improve air quality is a major concern to the Town of Hope Mills, our Board of Commissioners, and all municipal governments, whereas we need clean air to sustain tourism, agriculture, and other aspects of the economy. Now therefore, I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, proclaim the week of May 2nd through May 6th as Air Quality Awareness Week, and encourage all to take part in making our community a cleaner, healthier place to live, work, and play. This proclamation is really special for the Town of Hope Mills, and also I just want to remind our commissioners that next week, on May 13th, I will be swearing in some additional police officers, either five or six. So we're very proud of the fact of how well our new police chief has gone about his task of making sure we have a complete force, but also next week is National Police Week, to recognize the National Police Week 2022 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those police officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls is Police Week. Whereas International Association of Chiefs of Police has declared police officer safety and wellness a top priority, and the IACP Center for Officer Safety and Wellness promotes the importance of individual, agency, family, and community safeness, safety and wellness awareness. Whereas the members of the Police Department of the Town of Hope Mills play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Whereas the many women of the Police Department of the Town of Hope Mills unceasingly provide a viable, vital public service. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jackie Warner, call upon all the citizens of the Town of Hope Mills and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May the 11th through May 17th as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which our community may join in commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the Town of Hope Mills to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Next, I have the pleasure of presenting to you a young lady who has requested, and we did provide a proclamation for this coming Saturday, and the proclamation is in reference to her message of freedom to be kind. So I'm going to call Jenna Nance up to the podium at this time for her to make a formal presentation to our board. Jenna, welcome. I do want you to know that Jenna attends Grace Creek Middle School, correct?
Yes.
Grace Creek Middle School. And with her tonight is her mom, Jody Nance, and her grandmother in the back. So, welcome.
Hi, how are you? So my name is Jenna Grace Nance, and I attend Grace Creek Middle School. I'm an eighth grader there, and I am 13 years old. I'm a resident of Hope Mills, and I currently serve as Miss Spivey's Corner Outstanding Teen, and I will be competing for Miss North Carolina Outstanding Teen in June. So you have to have a social impact initiative for Miss North Carolina, and mine is Freedom to be Kind. I wanted to have a day, and I was hoping that you guys would declare a day of kindness, because I was hoping that we would have a ripple effect of kindness in the community if we had a day dedicated to it. I also created a kindness acronym for you guys to help remember kindness. So it spells out freedom, and F, be friendly, try opening the door for someone or complimenting someone. R, be real. E, be equitable, including everyone, not just the people that you like. Other E, do it every day, because if it becomes a habit, you'll have a good mindset. D, be deliberate in your acts of kindness, because if it doesn't mean anything, it won't have any effect, because to that oh, one person, it am matters. So on Kindness Day, I plan to hold my own community event, partnered with Baum &amp; Gilead, and we will be having lots of different members in the community from different schools. And finally, I have a kindness bag for you guys, and my mom will be passing that up for you, and it has my personalized bracelets in there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to let the board know that this is one of our leaders of tomorrow. We're doing anything and everything we can in Hope Mills to, to promote leadership with our young adults and mayor's youth leadership, and this young lady is 13 years old. And Jenna, I do have your official certificate, that, your proclamation that I would give to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And this, okay.
I see snacks. Snacks, got some cookies. I got one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. You're getting to my heart now. No problem, I'm good. Awesome job, young lady. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
I got one.
Freedom to be kind.
Thank you, Jenna. And thank you, Ms. Brown, and thank you, Jody Nance. Thank you for coming this evening. Next, we have a presentation from Charlotte Robinson related to funding and support for the TJR Life Center. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Robinson at this time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He doesn't need one more.
Okay. Good after. Wow. I'm hoarse. You need one more? Okay. All right. Good afternoon.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Charlotte Robinson, and my husband is Thurston Robinson. I'm a little hoarse today, so you guys bear with me. We're both active duty retired, I'm sorry, we're both retired service-disabled veterans, so it is my honor to be in a room full of other veterans and to do this presentation tonight. I also have two sons that are currently on active duty. One Lieutenant Colonel, serving at the Pentagon with the Joint Chief of Staff, and one a Sergeant First Class with about a year and a half to retire. I have two brothers, both retired military, one from the Air Force and one from the Army, so we are indeed a military family. My husband and I opened a 57,000 square foot community center/sports complex on March 7th, 2022. And it was brought to my attention that the board, the board voted three to two to support the YMCA and Fit for Life for having a partnership, which I personally feel like is a win-win for the community, to have a pool in Hope Mills, even in Cumberland County. During that presentation, Mr. Hoop, I hope I'm saying his name right, on December 20th, 2021, he was spot on when he gave you guys statistics about childhood obesity, and noted that for the first time ever, kids are dying before their parents due to health-related issues. And most of that is due to the inactivity that young kids have today. He also mentioned that we have the second-largest population of wounded veterans in the world due to Fort Bragg. During his presentation, the mayor reminded him to explain about the senior benefits for having a pool in the area. He said it was, it was not only good for their health, but for social and recreation opportunities also. I took the liberty to speak with John Soke and Kirk Devere that presented and spoke to you guys on December 2nd, 2021. They both have given their full support for the partnership that I'm about to propose to the board. I also want to mention that Billy West, his son, practiced at our facility, and he and I have had numerous conversations, along with Sheriff Wright, about creating some partnership and working on two specific programs. One of them being a midnight basketball league, where the kids would come in from 8:00 to 12:00, and play against the Police Department, Fire Department, whoever else that was interested. In my mind, this would humanize both the Police Department and the kids, making the friction between the two probably less likely in the event that they meet on one dark night here in Cumberland County. We're also working on a program so that if a kid gets caught stealing from Walmart, something minor, then before they go in the back of that police car and get a criminal record, they're brought out to the TJ Robinson Life Center. We have a juvenile diversion program, that's a 12-week program. Starts off with four weeks, where we take them out in the parking lot, run, run, run their tongue out like boot camp, and then we bring them in the classroom, give them 12 hours of one-hour sessions, and then we take them around the community, doing community service, where they're going to that grandma's, grandma's house, cutting the grass, painting the house, whatever is needed in the community. In your package, I enclose a copy of an email from 2018, where I requested the same kind of opportunity to speak before the board. That board consists of, the only two people that was on that board was the mayor and Mr. Legg. At that time, I was told that the board had no interest in a partnership. So in order, in preparation for this presentation, I went back and looked at board meetings from 2019 all the way up to 2021. Commissioner, I hope I.
Skarola.
Skarola. What I found is I've watched you stand in front of this podium and demand transparency, and that the board listen and do what's best for the taxpayers. Mr. Mitchell, you appeared in a lot of those board meetings also, you too, prior to you being elected, and asked the board to take care of the taxpayers. I would like to stop right now, because I believe pictures speaks volumes. We have four 30-second clips of videos that I would like to show you, starting with this, this one. The 411 about the courts. The first three courts are springback courts. And what that means is that they're good for athletes' needs in their back. There are also regulation-sized courts. What that means is they're the largest courts in Cumberland County, which is the court that the athletes love to play on. So that's the first three courts. The two courts in the back are hardwood courts. When you go see them, they're beautiful, with a beautiful logo in the middle. Those courts are designed for high school, collegiate, and professional play. I mean, look at this place. You have a 57,000 square foot community center/sports complex, brand spanking new, three springback floors, two hardwood courts. We can play five basketball games or nine volleyball games at one time. You come to talking about a place that has a full commercial kitchen, two large conference rooms, a massage parlor, barber shop. Why? Why are they excited about this place? Why wouldn't anybody not be excited about this place? Four-one-one about the seniors is, this is the place to be. The TJ Robinson Life Center senior programs have begun. We actually had a group of seniors come out. We start off with exercise. You know, they're warming up a little bit. You got everything, you know, loose stuff. And then actually, we started with just some basic exercise. We did some bicep curls, we did some legs, leg lifts. And I think the ninety, our ninety-year-old said that the part that she most liked was the fact that she got to kick her legs up in there. She really liked that. Everybody's engaged, it's excellent, everything, we know what they need, weightlifting included.
Uh, we, we did, we worked out our legs. I just recently had a hip uh, redone. And we worked, we did some exercises to work that out.
Can we move into our conference room? For games, I mean bingo and chess has been a big hit.
It was fun. It's always fun when you get other people doing the same thing. And see, I live alone, so it's nice to get with other people.
Our heart is for people and we don't want you just to be a number.
Then at the end of each session, we're gonna have somebody come in and work with you on some aspect of your life that's important that you may not otherwise have the opportunity to go out to their department and see. We may have the fire department come in and do a home safety class. We may have the um, insurance department come in. How do I apply for Medicare A and B? You know, so how do I write my will? How do I make sure um, how do I find out how to get transportation to the grocery store? How do I get my sticker with the DMV? So all sorts of things that seniors may otherwise may need, we'll have somebody to come out and work with them on getting that information.
I'll be back every chance I get. Like I said, I always feel a couple pull out from you. Because this, I mean, man, this is something you want to be a part of, this is groundwork, you know? It don't happen every day. And when I grew up in St. Paul, I never seen a, a bar and girl club or a gymnasium where we could play ball and do these type things. It just didn't happen. But for it to be happening now and somebody to take their part, turn it, put together, it's amazing.
It just makes me feel good that we have a place to come like this because it's not another one in Cumberland County like it.
And that's the four-one-one of the seniors at the TJ Robinson Life Center.
Hello, my name is Dr. Robin Cummings and I'm the chancellor of the University of North Carolina-Sanchez. And I consider it an honor to be able to speak about Coach Robb. Rebecca, my wife and I have four children. And each of those children took a different path getting through high school and college. Our youngest son, Adam, became quite interested in basketball. Played in middle school, played in high school. And one day he came home and he had found this great coach over at Edville and wanted us to take him over there and let him sign up for it. That was a commitment on my part as well as my wife's part, but it was important to him, so he did that. And that's when we met Coach Robb. I can say Coach Robb changed my son's life in grades and performance for plays. I can't think of anyone else. He was a role model. He taught my son morals, he taught my son values. And he taught my son how to play basketball at a very high level. One of my greatest life experiences is down at ESP Hidden World in Florida. And Coach Robb's team down there, and we played the best of the best and they won. My son scored the winning three-point goal. And had I known just how special that was at that time, I think I might have enjoyed it even more. Although I enjoyed it few minutes ago. But boys came over, they had won, they got their trophy. And Coach Robb just worked it in and told them what he meant, was to have accomplished what they did. I admire him a lot. He's a good man, he's a solid man, he's worthy of all praise and honor. I appreciate all he's done and look forward to his work.
Okay, all right. So um, after the YMCA presentation, I forget his name. You said you were in favor of anything that benefits seniors, veterans, and kids. You also said that the town could not afford to build nor manage a pool. And I'm gonna assume that that is correct with a sports complex since they don't, we don't have one currently. Um, Commissioner McCray, you felt like anything that helped the kids and the seniors was an investment in the community. My husband and I have built a five million dollar regional sports facility that just happened to be three miles from the two ninety-five bypass. Some of the amenities is a full commercial kitchen, as you saw. I just want to highlight two things that wasn't highlighted in the video. We have a community barber shop where we're giving free haircuts. We have uh, barbers and beauticians volunteering one hour a month. You see a kid out on the court need a haircut, you take him in there, you give him a haircut discreetly, they go back out, nobody has to know. The other thing I want to highlight is the community showers. I found out three or four years ago that there was no place designated in Cumberland County for homeless kids to take showers. The ones that are sleeping in their car with their parents at Walmart. So we've dedicated our showers to the homeless kids in Cumberland County. Working with the Board of Education to ensure that those kids know that those showers are available for them. Well, thank you so much. So with the, with the three ninety-five bypass, like I said, this facility is one of, if not the main attraction draw to draw people to your town here in Hope Mills for major tournaments for basketball, volleyball, concerts, resource fairs to Hope Mills, North Carolina. This facility will create over sixty-five jobs and single-handedly increase the economic impact for both Hope Mills, Fayetteville, and surrounding areas. Based on the feasibility study we have, we have over two hundred and forty thousand people annually will come in through the town of Hope Mills. That will affect hotels, restaurants, and local business owners. Everybody wins with the TJ Robinson Life Center Sports Complex. So today I'm here to propose the following partnership. We would like to offer Hope Mills, first of all, I saw Ms. Edwards, I think, come in when I came in. And you guys saw we had started a senior program. But I propose to offer Ms. Edwards the opportunity to run Hope Mills Senior Program through our facility. I had one of your trainers come by, I don't remember her name, but she told me, I think, that you had one date for the senior program and it was a little tight little spot. So I propose that Hope Mills can use that facility to, I'm working with Ms. Edwards, to uh, run the senior program for the seniors. And free of charge, Mr. Legg and Commissioner Scorola, because you guys were concerned about the YMCA, you know, doing the partnership and the members still having to pay. So I propose that. Also, I would like to work with Mr. Mitchell. You made a, a recommendation to the YMCA that you would work with them to ensure that the veterans try to work to get the VA of Fort Bragg to get a reduced cost or a non-cost for the veterans. I would like to ask your support and help and working with us to ensure that the veterans can come in and use the, we have a weight room also. Come in and use the weight room and work together so we'll have the seniors coming in from Hope Mills free of charge. The plan is to have the veterans coming in free of charge. We have a ten-dollar membership for the kids. But we're like St. Joe's, no kid is gonna not be allowed in the facility if they don't have ten dollars a month. Somebody is gonna pay for that kid to get in the facility. I would also like to work, and I've spoken to the athletic director with Hope Mills to run Hope Mills basketball and volleyball programs through the facility. And to develop a special needs, needs league for our children with disabilities that only get recognized once a year at the Special Olympics. We would like to change the narrative of the town's involvement or lack of involvement in this project. So I'm proposing that the town also, um, uh, I'm propos, my proposal is the same as the YMCA. Five hundred and, five thousand five hundred dollars a month for a hundred and twenty months commitment from the town of Hope Mills. I'm also proposing a tax abatement based on the number of heads and beds that we will be bringing to the community. Now, the TDA and the Visitors Bureau will be keeping track of how many people that we bring into the community based on the facility. So that is my proposal for the town of Hope Mills and the partnership that I would like to propose to you guys. And then Ms. Valerie Shue would like two minutes.
Yes. Thank y'all for allowing me my time. I speak as a parent um, of a basketball player. I have a junior that's in high school. And today I sat down and I thought about it. We travel outside of Fayetteville because Fayetteville does not have a facility until they open their facility with five courts. We're always traveling to Rocky Mount, we're traveling to Rock Hill, always outside and we're always staying somewhere. So I just kind of put my head together and this is what I came up with. Who doesn't care about money? At the end of the day, when the ball finishes bouncing, it's all about money because basketball is a business. And of course, I'm a business lady and money matters to me, so I know it matters to y'all. And what I'm hearing Charlotte say, and I was here with her when she spoke to y'all years ago, why does this town need a YMCA when they have a facility that was built by them with their money and this town was paid nothing for it? Listen to this. Just, this was how, this is how it would benefit the community and the surrounding areas. At a glance, let's look at an average weekend tournament that we go to out of Fayetteville, bringing it here at their facility. Seventy-two teams on an average enter the tournament with ten players per team equals seven hundred and twenty players in total. Seven hundred and twenty players bringing two adults, grandparents, parents, per player is fourteen hundred and forty people. If they bring one sibling, most of them bring more than one sibling, but that would be an additional seven hundred and twenty people. For a total number of people for the weekend, two thousand eight hundred and eighty. Let's talk about lodging. I called the Hotel Inn Express and Suites located on thirty-one thousand eleven North Main Street here in Hope Mills. The average cost there is two hundred dollars a night. If a family stays two nights, that times seven hundred and twenty families, that's five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars one weekend. Food, for breakfast, just say twenty-five dollars. And this is for the average family of three. Lunch, twenty-five dollars. Dinner, seventy-five dollars. At a hundred and twenty-five dollars per day for, per family for two days, times seven hundred and twenty families, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, okay? Gas, just say they put fifty dollars in their tank while they're here. At seven hundred and twenty families, that's another thirty-six thousand dollars, right here in your community. So with lodging, food, and gas, that's an average for one weekend of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars spent in our area. At fifteen tournaments from April to July, and that's when we play our travel season, it would generate approximately, are y'all ready for this number? And if y'all don't want it, eleven million eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars right here in your community. And y'all, we spend more than this on a weekend. Last weekend, we played in Dillon, South Carolina. I don't even know what me and my husband spent because he coaches a team, because we want our son to have the exposure. This includes no shopping or entertainment. This not, this doesn't include a, a trip to Walmart or to this other putt-putt over here because the boys are gonna want to do something, okay? So let me talk about this. Fayetteville is a hotbed for basketball. Fayetteville and Hope Mills has produced a multitude of Division One basketball players and NBA players. So I'm just gonna name a few for y'all. Dennis Smith Jr., Josh Nickelberry, DeMarco Dunn, Joey Baker, Reggie Rayner, Marcus Melvin, Michael Joyner, Manny Bates, Jamari Harvey, Ian Steer, and I'm sure a lot of y'all probably know Rusty Clark. And the list goes on. Basketball provides exposure and opportunity to our children. My opinion as a parent, basketball has kept my son. I can, I can hold him to anything for basketball. My son has a four-point-O GPA. He attends Northwood Temple Academy. He is an exceptional student, but it's because of his basketball I can keep him that way. Let me tell you something. My son is a normal seventeen-year-old boy. All the gyms around here for us adults are open basically twenty-four hours a day. I'm not saying our basketball courts should be open twenty-four hours a day. There's nothing for our kids to do on the weekends. There's house parties. Do I want my son at a house party? Absolutely not. I'd rather him be at their facility on a weekend. The church, our church, we have a gym, but you know what? It's locked up on a weekend. They can't get in over there to play basketball on a weekend. That's where he wants to be. New Year's Eve, there was a party. My son was at the church trying to get in to play basketball. That's where I want my son to be. This gym that they have built here with those five courts over there with their own money is a refuge for our children, I'm telling you. The church next door, we were at a basketball tournament on Sunday and we are faithful people and I know that we should be in church. The people, they, they can walk right next door to church. That little church just right next door, they should be so tickled that that sinner is there. Look, this is what I'm saying. This is a church because Charlotte and Thurston are dedicated, they're Christian people. They have surrounded theirselves with people that are as good or even better than them pastors. And I like to think that a pastor is better than myself. My husband's a coach, but he is a Christian man. He is good for those children. This is what, this is what they need, this is what this town needs. And this town needs to take advantage of what they have. That's my opinion as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Next, we have the presentation of the manager's recommended proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. And I'll turn it over to this time to uh, Mr. Mazeros and Mr. Holland.
Thank you, ma'am. So I'm presenting the, my recommended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. It also has your updated fee schedule included. Uh, I would recommend that we schedule the budget workshop maybe sixteen prior to the next meeting. Obviously, if you wanted to change that date, it'd be a standard meeting.
Yeah, it'd be a standard.
I'm also recommending that we have the public hearing on Monday, June sixth. Um, so I, we are presenting to a balanced budget, the department heads' top priorities and requests to these, along with commission input from our retreat. Um, please do um, review this, Drew Kimbrough, Kedius, and O'Leary, and Alex Laydow. Um, we have some new commissioners, those who are familiar, I'll read that, but we didn't go through real, real quickly. Please send himself and, and I any changes, recommendations, things you want us to research or look into so that we don't get to the workshop and just have kind of blind, hey, we're gonna talk about this and not know about it. I would read to you in our final notice, um, it does have, I'd like to recognize my department heads and all of our town staff that this year is the first year we've looked at leasing. Um, we've also looked at specialized department requests. I commend all of our staff for their hard work and especially want to thank Drew. Um, it takes a lot of work and effort to do the budget. Without their help, I clearly could not do this alone. It is a team effort. I wouldn't say that this improves all of our services and our staff needs from their recommendations and it comes to you for review. I would also like to highlight that with the state project, SCIF funding, which is not part of the budget, and with the federal ARPA money and this current project being built next door, that right now the town of Hope Mills this year will have twenty-five point four million dollars for the construction projects, which is the biggest in the terms of history. We have the same staff trying to accomplish all of that. So it is a lot of heavy lifting on those individual departments and staff. But I think it's. But I think it's something that they should all be proud of and I'm proud of them and appreciate all of your hard work. So if you're a few, if you want to.
Okay, just to let you know what you have in your book here. It's pretty large. Those that have been on the council before might be used to what, what you have in it. But if you notice, the front section before the tabs, that is the actual budget document, okay? So you've got your general, you've got the budget message, then you've got the general fund budget, then you've got the power bill and stormwater, then you've got capital outlay, the salary schedule, and then the fee schedule. So that's actually the budget document there. Do read the budget message when you have a time, when you have time. And then the back section, the largest section, the tabs, each tab is a different department. So what you have in your book is the same information that the manager and I have from each department in order to make a decision about the budget, what's been submitted to you. So as far as transparency goes, your book is identical to mine and the manager's book. So if you do have any questions or anything like that, definitely let myself or the manager know. When we have the budget workshop, if you've got specific questions about something, if you don't mind giving us a heads up. So if we have to do any research, we can come back with an answer to any questions that you have. But do you have any questions now before we go any further?
I know that it's been requested that we, we have it on a separate date rather than prior to a meeting because, mainly because we do have two new board members that are not, have not gone through the process, but also because we want to have more time to deliberate on it and also to get, before then, submit questions to you or to Mr. Mizaros. So is there, looking at the calendar, I guess the question would be for the board, and then again, you'd have to find out the town calendar would work. But is there another day? If we went, if we came, it would have to be probably the, the week, next week. If we wanted to have some kind of recommendation and present, to be presented at May sixteenth, if we're gonna do the public hearing, the first meeting in June. So my thought is it would, one of the, next week? Is there a better day? I know that we have, there's a couple of things on my calendar, but I can, that can be arranged if we need to. And we do have some committee meetings. If we could meet, say, at five, would five o'clock work? I know.
On what day?
On what day?
Oh, that would, that would, what I was gonna request is looking at Commissioner Marley and Mayor Protim's schedule because they do have to arrange from work. So do you have a thought on which day would be better?
Are you all saying to meet next week?
Next week is too short.
Yeah, I can't, I need to have a look at this book.
Well, we're just trying to meet, or what will happen is you're gonna, well, we would try to meet before that May sixteenth meeting.
Is it a necessity to meet before the May sixteenth?
It's just a necessity that this budget is approved by the end of June.
Right, by the end of June. But I'm saying, is it a necessity to meet?
You've got to have a public hearing also.
Right.
So we're recommending that you have the public hearing on the sixteenth, which is our next meeting. That isn't extremely busy, which is, yeah, June sixth is the adoption of the actual budget.
No, June sixth is the public.
Public hearing is June sixth.
Don't have a meeting anytime during the month of May.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just what we've done in the past.
Okay.
For our June, the next meeting. But you set whenever y'all are available.
Okay.
What about the week up to sixteenth, find a timeframe?
Would the seventeenth work, that Tuesday? How's Tuesday look for Commissioner Marley and Mayor Protim? And the time could be set, that would be at your convenience.
I would have to do it at five.
Okay.
You can do it at five?
Yeah.
Seventeenth at five, would that work for you, Commissioner Marley?
I was looking, I was looking at my calendar, I wanted to see. The seventeenth?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
What time?
Five, at five.
Should be.
Okay. I know that week is the senior honors awards committees, meetings at the different high schools. So Monday, I have to be at Jack Britt and Wednesday, I have to be at Grace Creek. I do not have Southview's date scheduled, but other than that, Tuesday would work for me at five unless.
It's good for me.
It's good for you, it's good for you, Commissioner Legg?
Anytime is good for me.
Okay. So if we go May seventeenth at five, we'll meet here in the board's room. But prior to that meeting, I would ask that each of you go through this and get some questions or concerns or whatever submitted to the town manager and to Mr. Holland because that way they can prepare answers or responses prior to that time. So May seventeenth at five P.M.
That'll work.
And that, that would, that meeting would also be advertised so people would know that we're having a budget workshop.
That'll work.
Okay, thank you, thank you much.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Scott, does this budget include a athletic coordinator?
It does include two new positions, the athletic coordinator and the sanitation. During September birth in the sanitation position.
We need that badge.
And those would be the, that would be the reason for going through the budget and making, preparing those questions or interests so that we would know. Alrighty then, next we have no public hearings, but now we have public comments. So I'll start off with recognizing Mr. Bill Bowman and Mr. Greg Adair, who is first on our list. Will remind you that public comments are three minutes and that we will ask that you identify yourself and give an address before you speak. Thank you, sir.
My name is Bill Bowman and I'm sixteen sixty-two Green Oak Avenue in Fayetteville.
I am Greg Adair, twenty-three twenty-five Cleveland Avenue, Fayetteville.
And this is the long and the short of it, right here.
The long and the.
And the short. I come, thank you very much, Mayor, Commissioners, for allowing me three minutes. I probably wouldn't have taken that long, but I'm here on behalf of Gates Four. Even though Gates Four is not a part of Hope Mills, they are very much akin to Hope Mills. And several years ago, they realized that one, one thing that this side of the county lacked was entertainment, quality entertainment. So they contracted with the Fayetteville Dinner Theater and brought Live Dinner Theater to Gates Four and then created with the help of Greg Adair, a music concert, a series last year that was hugely successful. And the reason Greg is here is because they have contracted him again and the theater to create another series, a concert series at Gates Four because they, again, understand from the reaction they had last year how successful it was and how much the people of Hope Mills enjoyed it. So they went one step further by making the concert unique that, that Mr. Adair's gonna tell you about. But the big thing they did was found two area sponsors, Jay Dowdy of All American Homes and Kim Everts, who became the title sponsors. So all the people that attend the concerts can attend free of charge, alright? So now Hope, Hope Mills can become part of that community where they have good quality entertainment on this side of the county. And the concert series that they have created is quite unique, and I'm gonna let Mr. Adair tell you about that.
Well, it's just, it's, what I did was create, get up with the people in the other areas. And I do most of the planning for a lot of the areas for the concert series. I just keep everything unique to Gates Four, every, everything that comes in there, nowhere else in Fayetteville all year. So these people are seeing quality entertainment such as tribute bands like Heart and Motley Crue and, you know, Lynyrd Skynyrd. There's, there's all kinds of stuff going on, but there's, each one has its own week. And then, and it's, like I say, it's coordinated across the grid too. So nobody can't say, you know, well, we'll see them next week in Fayetteville. That ain't gonna happen, so it's been planned.
It's unique to this part of the county. So what we want and what we're here to ask is that you help us get the word out to the citizens of Hope Mills to come on down. It's a beautiful area. It's, they've got food, beverages, and indoor plumbing, okay? And so, so on this concert.
Good family event, too.
It's a great family event. I brought some, some cards and some posters. I can get more for you. And I'm also gonna have a table specifically there, a VIP table for the commissioners, so you guys can come and see what it's all about and help them work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for sponsoring this too.
Loosely Crue, instead of Motley Crue.
Next, we have Jim Morris.
Hi, I'm Jim Morris, thirty-seven twenty-five Floyd Drive in Hope Mills. I had prepared a little statement today, but it's already been resolved. I've already achieved everything that I hoped to achieve this evening. But I'll, you know, I'll read a couple of things anyways.
Okay.
Because I, I think it's important. You know, in the, in the spring of twenty oh three, I received an assignment to Pope Air Force Base. And given Pope's reputation, I can't tell you how hard it was that I tried to get out of that assignment. My wife and I came to North Carolina and our real estate agent brought us to Hope Mills. And we drove around Hope Mills and we fell in love with the town that day. We went out to eat later that night after we purchased a home and we watched in horror on the news as the dam broke just a few hours after we had driven over it and then the lake washed away. Not long after we settled here, I, I had the opportunity to attend a Memorial Day event in the town. I was immediately overcome by the small-town feel of the event. I looked around and noticed the numerous honest, hard-working people that were obviously running the event. Unaccustomed to the pot that normally goes into a ceremony, the Foybals made it for a uniquely charming event and I, it just made me fall in love with the town a little bit more. There, I attended every event that I could until we left Hope Mills in twenty-ten. In twenty-sixteen, after I retired, we returned back to Hope Mills there. And remembering those ceremonies at the Veterans Memorial Park, I spoke often with my neighbor, Bob Gorman, about how to get involved with the town and what we could do to, to get involved with those events again. Not too long after, after that, I, I had the honor of getting to serve on the Veteran Affairs Committee there. Joining forces with the VFW Post ten-six-thirty, American Legion Post thirty-two, VFW Post six-seventy, the auxiliaries and the scouting programs, we've held numerous events at that park over the years. The Fayetteville Observer often wrote that Hope Mills was the best place in Cumberland County to come see a veterans' remembrance ceremony there. You know, together with all the organizations, we worked to improve that park a lot. We had a new fence, we gave the cannon a fresh paint, a fresh coat of paint. We replaced all those broken benches out there with brand-new benches and we got a sidewalk in there so the wheelchair people can get to the event from the handicap parking. There, there's numerous other implants that were there to improve that park in the coming years. Of course, pride in this town is, is no small surprise. In twenty-nineteen, Hope Mills was named the number-one town in America for military recruits going into the service. Patriotism is alive and well here in this town. But the expansion of the road is important. Anyone that's been out there during the schools in session, anyone that's been out there at five or six o'clock in the evening, you understand how important that expansion is. And I'll just say, since we've achieved our goals tonight, that on behalf of the twenty-one-hundred-plus veterans that live in this town, along with their families, I look forward to be able to find a new location for that park so that we can continue the tradition of having these fine remembrance ceremonies throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening too. Next, we have Dr. Adrian Monroe.
Good evening. I am Dr. Adrian Monroe, and like many of you here tonight, I wear several hats. I'm Adrian Monroe, a preacher in my church. I'm one of the associate ministers there. I'm also Adrian Monroe, the psychologist. I'm Adrian Monroe, the parent and wife. And I am also Adrian Monroe that works at the VA Medical Center. But tonight, I'll stand before you as Adrian Monroe, the psychologist and business owner who cares about children and the elderly because of the rearing that I had from my own parents. In support of the TJ Robinson Life Center, I wanted to simply bring a couple of things to your attention. In twenty-thirty, there will be more than this, more sixty-five years and up individuals than there are zero to seventeen years old. The aging of baby boomers means that within just a couple decades, older people are projected to outnumber children for the first time in the United States' history. In just eight years, one in every five residents will be a retirement age. Passing the baton, what this phrase means is to pass job and responsibility on to another. My mother has taught us well, as both her own children as well as children in church, that the hands of the younger person on the baton and the older generation must, at one point, if you picture the track race, both hands of those individuals have to be on that baton. And I see that being done every day at the TJ Robinson Life Center where they have the youth as well as the children and they brag about being able to teach older people how to text while teaching younger children how to, to learn respect. That's the holding of the baton. Holding of the baton to me means accountability. And so at the TJ Robinson Life Center, they're teaching accountability skills, they're teaching traditions, they're teaching morals, they're teaching respect, technology. Fervor, because young people have fervor, but they need an older person to teach them how to guide that fervor. Because if not, then fervor will get out of control and indulge in not-so-productive activities. And finally, focused energy. I believe that the TJ Robinson Center is doing a great work and for the, not only for the community of Hope Mills, but the church to which I belong is in Hope County, in Rayford. We have church members coming all the way over here to Hope Mills, which was not accounted for in the, the numbers that was given, that were given to us earlier about the income that comes to Hope Mills. You have different surrounding areas coming for that one center, and I think that they are doing a marvelous work. And I ask on behalf of the Christian faith community, as well as the elderly, as well as the young people, please support that project because it is a phenomenal work that they are doing. They built it from the ground up and has been said many times before, with their own money. That means their own sweat, blood, and tears to share with this community and other surrounding for young people and old people to get together and learn something from one another. Thank you so much for your time.
Dr. Monroe, would you speak your name and address into the microphone so that the clerk will have that on for recording?
Dr. Adrian Monroe, Adrian Owens Monroe, and my address is sixteen thirty-one Kiara Court, and that's Fayetteville two-eight-three zero-four. Thank you.
Next, we have Zenetha Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me this evening. You would like me to speak my name and address, certainly. My name is Zenetha Lewis. I reside at two-sixty-four Renee's Lane, Rayford, North Carolina. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the TJ Robinson Life Center, not only as a volunteer, as a coordinator. We have many senior programs coming that are so phenomenal and many other people that are interested, just to see the, the light in the seniors' eyes, just to be able to have a place to kind of engage during the day where they don't have to feel restricted. And the passion that the Robinsons have for these people, I've seen it firsthand, that they go above and beyond. They don't just sit back in a chair in an office, that they're very hands-on. So the senior programs that are actually coming as a caregiver support program, where seniors who are fifty-five and older who support their grandchildren or foster children, they're able to come to the center for support and resources, which we're really good at connecting the community with everything that they need. And then with that, they'll be able to send their grandkids to camp for free, as well as be able to receive school supplies and other type of support resources. And then we have our sunrise walkers who come on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, early in the morning to get some light exercise in a quiet place where they don't have to feel overwhelmed by the, the gym craziness. They can walk freely and comfortably in a safe place, as well as throughout the day, we'll have coordinated programs that are organized. As stated, we have games, activities, and we're gonna teach a lot of our seniors, because my dad is, he's getting older. I'm noticing the connection with the technology, with the vast changing of the apps. We definitely want them to stay abreast of that because they're being taken advantage of, which isn't fair, and we definitely don't want any of that. So we want to become a teaching source for our seniors, as well as our youth. We're starting youth programs that are expanding rather quickly, where we're investing in self-esteem as well as career readiness, helping our kids, guide them to where they're supposed to go. I know the schools aren't fully supported, but we definitely want. I know the schools aren't fully supported, but we definitely want to be that backbone and that support for them on the outside. So I stand before you, just saying, support the programs at TJ Robinson Life Center. It's going to make a world of a difference, not only for the older age, but the younger age, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Early.
Good evening. My name is Andrew R. Early III. I reside at 6443 Touchstone Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28311. I definitely won't use all of my three minutes today. I'm here in support of TJ Robinson Life Center. Been a part of the project since the first, before the first trees were cut down over 11 years ago. The only thing I would ask is that you just take into consideration everything that you've heard today, as well as in previous meetings, and any support that you can provide as a community to ensure that the facility itself is successful will be duly appreciated. It'll have a positive impact on our youth, our seniors, as well as our veterans. And as far as buy-in, I don't know any other way to show buy-in, other than what Charlotte and Thurston have already done. I mean, they've kind of put up their whole life savings and then some to get this project off the ground. So again, any support you can provide, any direction you can provide to assist in additional funding, through grants, grant writers, because we want this to be a partnership at the end of the day, right? The town of Hope Mills is going to benefit greatly from this. We're going to benefit greatly, and overall, the kids, our veterans, and our seniors are going to benefit greatly. So again, any type of assistance we can get from the town of Hope Mills to make this a success for all involved, we definitely welcome that. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next, we have Sally Bailey.
Hi, I'm Sally Bailey, 58, 57, Hunting Ridge Road, Hope Mills, North Carolina. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and our town employees and staff, okay? I'm here to talk about something that's been, we've been all looking at it for years, and we've just kind of, you know, when you look at something so long, you just don't see it anymore. It's the sidewalks that come down from Carly Sees on both sides of the road that go to the one on the right, if you're going straight to the stoplight, it stops at Johnson Street. The one on the left goes all the way down to the Marquee. I've been told years ago that this is state-supported sidewalks because it's a state-supported road. These sidewalks have been in horrible condition. They're not level. They're not handicap-accessible. They're broken. And if they belong to the state to take care of, we need to go after them and get them to do it in a very timely fashion. Like, this has been years, okay? Then, if it's also a part of the new Rockfish extension, we need to find out, and how long is it going to take them to get it done? We may have this Rockfish Road widening that might go on for another 10 years. We have no idea how long it's going to take them to do it. I would not think that long, but definitely maybe five years, four to five years. So can they not do the sidewalks before then, so that the sidewalks are at least safe for our people to walk on? Have you ever watched some people walking up and down those? They're having to go by the cracks and watch where they step, so they don't fall. We've got a big manhole down there that definitely you could not get a wheelchair across very well. And, I mean, it's just not safe. It doesn't look like Hope Mills. So I would implore y'all to look into the State Department, DOT, whoever you call. And I feel sure you guys know I do not know. And let's see what we can do and get it done. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments, and I appreciate everyone being here tonight to participate. And again, just like Mayor Pro Tim said, this is a good turnout for our meeting this evening. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything that you'd like moved from consent agenda to new business? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before you?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. We have no old business under new business. A consideration of accepting revision of Section 58-213 of the Panhandling Ordinance by passing Ordinance Amendments S. 2022-03, and this is behind Tab 5. And I guess I'll talk, let, okay, I'll give that to our attorney to give us some information more than what we have here.
Sure. So the idea behind this, with the, with the, and I think the change that he had requested is, our original ordinance had in it that you could not panhandle unless, if you've been asked not to, in a private business, or, and this, basically switched it back to you cannot panhandle or solicit unless you have express permission. So it takes the burden off of the property owner to affirmatively go out and say, hey, you can leave. And instead, it says, cannot solicit unless you have prior permission.
Okay. Madam, may I have one question?
Okay.
And, sir, you can just acknowledge, but hand raised, does it meet the, I mean, what is required to enforce the policy? Need to be?
This is a change?
Yes.
To enforce the policy? Yeah, absolutely.
So, okay.
It's much easier to enforce than it is now.
All right, thank you.
I think the issue is, you know, you've got to try to enforce now. You have to talk to the property owner.
Right.
Find out.
I'm saying.
This, this puts the burden on the person who wants to do it.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I thought we put this program in the active state two years ago, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yes.
And it's just the Commissioner leg, under Item 6, we're just changing the wording under that part of this because it makes it easier for them to enforce.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Any other questions that you have for our attorney or anything in reference? So we just need?
Motion, right.
A motion to revise the order.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Amendment S. 2022-03.
And this would be changing Section 58-2013 of the Panhandling Ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The motion we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda is consideration of Resolution R. 2022-14, setting a public hearing date of May 16th for Annexation A. 2022-03. The board accepted the application for annexation of April 18th, 2022, and instructed the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the application, which has been completed. So we just need someone to make a motion to approve Resolution R. 20-22.
So, mo.
Okay, I have a motion to approve Resolution R. 2022-14, setting a public hearing date of 7:00 p.m. on May 16th for the possible annexation of A. 2022-03. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
A question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
From me, to the clerk.
Okay.
Are we lining too many things up on the one day? To make it a long evening, or?
It is what it is.
Yep.
Oh, we're lining too many things up on the 16th.
Yep. All right, next, we have consideration of acceptance of annexation petition A. 2022-04, being all of Lot 1, containing six acres, more or less shown as planned, entitled, corner subdivision addition of Lot 1, and adopting Resolution R. 2022-12, instructing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the application.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number R. 2022-12 and direct the town clerk to investigate sufficiency.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much. All right, next, we have nomination committee's recommendations, and I'll turn it over to our Mayor Pro Tim.
Madam Mayor, the nominating committee would like to recommend Jessie Devane to the Historic Preservation Committee, and Trea Jenkins to the Parks and Rec Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, and we welcome these new members. Next, we have our manager's report. Do we have anything, did you have any questions about or any additions to our manager's report? Anybody got any questions?
Just need a motion to accept?
Okay. So all we got to do is just, just read it. All right. The next thing on our agenda, of course, is the reminders of things coming up. And the main reminder for this would naturally would be Thursday, May 5th. It's National Day of Prayer. It's at noon, and it's right out at the gazebo. Saturday is our Household Hazardous Waste and Shred Event. It's also the day that we have a townwide yard sale. And it's also the day for the hazardous waste and shred event. But we also have the youth coming in to help clean up parks. There's several things happening on that day. May 21st is the Red Cross, is their smoke detector day. And they're looking for, we've got information that will be posted on the website. But what they'll be looking for will be volunteers to help, and they'll actually do the training. But what they'll be doing is they'll need volunteers from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And they do have, I've got a flyer that has a scan-me site where you can actually go and look at more information. But it's called Sound the Alarm, and they're going to be putting in smoke detectors in homes and residences of people who don't have them and need them. So that we also will be looking for people that need those. And they particularly try to target our seniors and in areas where they might not or could not afford smoke detectors in their homes. It's a freebie. We just have to set up the appointments. We have to have volunteers to help the Red Cross. So that's on May the 21st. And May 14th is Pet Fest, and that will be here in the park. And that's another event that has been very popular throughout the years. Next, we have our committee liaison updates, and I will start with Commissioner Marley with Historic Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee met on April 6th at the Parks and Rec Building. They discussed how to complete the historic district inventory and some, that was some old business, new business. They were asking about budget concerns, and I told them that the manager hadn't gave us his recommended budget, so I didn't really know what to tell them on that at that time. They discussed upcoming projects and possible fundraising opportunities, and a pretty productive meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell, Appearance Commission, and I know that the Hope Mills Sunshine Committee, I know you have a representative from that committee here this evening that wants to tell about it.
Okay. That'll work. And then I have, want to add something to that. Yes, we met, what day? I don't remember. But the biggest discussion was the Christmas decorations and trying to have budget for that because I received a lot of feedback last year about how poorly the decorations was inside the town. And they are working on that. They're putting together some plans to submit and see that we actually have a very festive Christmas-type events and decorations this year. Next, we have, who's going to speak? You, Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, Mr. Maury, Ron, Mr. Maury.
Oh, for the seniors?
Mm-hmm, for the seniors. Our Sunshine Committee had its first official meeting, and Mr. Maury is our chairperson.
Like I said, we had our first meeting, second Sunday, or Monday, last month. We had six members show up. I found out I'm the only male. I guess I could still say that without going to woke jail.
Okay.
It took Pat an hour and a half to convince me I'm a senior citizen. I always thought I was an old fart veteran.
Well, you aren't.
Somewhere along the meeting, Pat either hypnotized me or gave me some drugs. I ended up as the chairman. So I don't know how it worked. And ladies, would you please stand up? We've got three members here. The committees stand up so everybody can see you. It was just the six of us at the meeting. Nobody from Hope Mills or Park and Rec showed. We threw some stuff against the wall, see what stuck. The main thing is, our problem is, how do we let people know we exist? And we sure like to have people come to our meetings to feed us stuff because we're just seven people, and we can't, you know, we're just a small group just to kind of get it together. But we need feedback from the seniors in Hope Mills.
Okay.
The new commander of Hope Mills Post, Operator's Post, for any type of function that we need to use a post for. And the hoggiling boss, if you need somebody from Hope Mills, Sunshine Committee for your veterans' park, I'll volunteer. Just don't tell my wife. But we got a very good, we got a very good crew going, but we just need to find out how we can get information fed to us to see what the hell the seniors want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we like to keep it in Hope Mills.
Yes, Madam.
All right. We will, and we will, either, either Commissioner Mitchell and myself, the next meeting is May 9th at 6:00, and you'll see us there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Pat's on the love boat for that meeting.
Okay.
She's not a sugar daddy.
Madam Mayor, if it's in order, I would like to actually, being part of the senior committee, is that we probably have the town manager, work with our sports director, Lamaco, see what we can do to work with TJ Robinson to incorporate some of the activities working with our Sunshine Center, as well as other ways that we might be able to collaborate and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Scrowla with the Veterans Affairs Committee.
Madam Mayor, so I was in Florida this week, or, yes, but.
Boo. Yeah.
I hate myself. My only vacation in, like, forever. Okay? Jim Morris will give the brief.
Okay.
Okay. I just say that, you know, we just concluded the tax season this past March 31st. If you didn't know, the Veteran Affairs Committee, in conjunction with VFW Post 10630 and the IRS, we work to provide free tax preparation and filing over at our post. We took care of 42 low-income families in here in the Hope Mills. We saved them over $10,000 in tax filing fees that they would have had to pay if they didn't went to H&R Block. We recouped about $24,000 in refunds for them, and we got, basically got them stuff done for free for them. We hope to do that in more in the coming years. If we have more volunteers, we can expand the service a little bit more to them. But, yeah, we just finished that up. Forty-two people in Hope Mills we took care of.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Good.
And now we may have Mayor Pro Tim with Parks and Rec and Prime Movers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to say, on behalf, we did talk about the TJ Robinson Life Center at our Parks and Rec Committee, and I'm not really for sure of everything that has happened in the past, but I think it's time that we all move on from the past. I think that we need TJ Robinson Life Center. Our Parks and Rec programs are exploding. We don't have enough room. We have several new developments that's coming into the community. I think they're coming faster than we'll be able to service the people in our community. So I think it's good that we come up with a partnership. I would also like to ask the town manager if he could work with our Parks and Rec director as well to see what type of partnerships that we can enter. An example of that is our wrestling season ended, but we had 40 kids that were registered and additional 19 on the waiting list. Just to show you how much of a capacity we already are. And I try to not repeat the same thing that's on the manager's list. They are looking at starting a baseball program for the, or a T-ball program for the three- and four-year-olds, the, the three and four-year-olds, which, within the next couple of years, there will be no tournaments here in Hope Mills this year. The softball is in Moore County, and the baseball will be in Lillington. And they also talked about the, um, the sign, the marquee at the, at the lake, that it does not have a sign saying "Welcome to Hope Mills," so maybe looking at some ways that, and we also talked about the appearance, um, around the marquee as well. And they also, also working on the sponsorship brochure, and they said it will be ready, should be ready by our next meeting, and I think that's everything that is not already in the manager's report. Thank you.
All righty. Um, and I have, tonight we met, Mayor's Youth Leadership Committee met. They were involved with, of course, the cleanup on, uh, April, in April. They are also going to volunteer for May 7th. We do have, I am this year presenting them cords at their senior programs. We do have quite a few that have served two years because of COVID, and those seniors, uh, to, you know, to honor them, I'm actually going to their schools, but we'll also recognize them with our normal certi- certificate that we give from the town. Of course, the Hope Mills Sunshine Committee will be attending that one come May 9th. Mid-Carolina Council of Governments, I did go to the opening day for senior games over at Reed Ross. It was, it was a very enlightening event because of all the things that they were doing and all the participants they had, but the Mid-Carolina Council does and offer ways for our seniors to be involved, not only just locally, but within the council, which would be in the three-county span. FAMPO, uh, my next FAMPO meeting is May 18th, and that, of course, is, deals with transportation, DOT. The, uh, FCEDC meeting, we haven't had one, but we do have a Mayor's Coalition meeting coming up this Friday at 8:00, and it will be at the Coman County Department of Social Services. So any of the commissioners that would like to attend, uh, the Mayor's meeting, the Mayor's Coalition meeting is on that date, and, um, I encourage you to come if you can, it's available time. Any staff comments? Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, talked to Scott this evening about the lake and opening up the swimming area early. We've had, you know, a lot of confrontations about people already swimming, and the weather's warm, so if it's not an issue with you all, and it's your pleasure, I would like to go ahead and open the swimming area now, starting tomorrow, if it's not an issue.
Is there anything we have to formally put within the lake ordinance or anything? I know there's a date specified there, do we have to do something there, or just can do it by vote, motion and vote? Okay, so that would be May 3rd? So do we have a motion to open the swimming area, May 3rd?
Mayor, I make a motion to open, uh, the lake swimming area, May 3rd.
Okay, we have, have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other staff comments?
We do have our ARP meeting tomorrow, the Vice Mayor, Mayor, Finance Director.
Okay, and that's at 4:00, the ARP meeting. Any other, good for the guy? All righty then, is there anything else from our board?
Sure.
All right, we would, at this time, I request someone to...
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, thank you.